Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City West Bend Licensing Board for December 6, 2021, and note that we do have a quorum. We have three items on the agenda, first being approval of minutes, the regular, I'm sorry, the Licensing Board regular meeting minutes for November 8.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to agenda items for consideration. Number two, original Class A combination license for West Petro Inc., Shell West 3,100, West Washington Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments on this one? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. And then number three, original Class B beer license for Stephen Gill of Breakout 262 LLC, Westman Axe Escape at 1640 South Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments on this one? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And having no further business for the Licensing Board, adjourned by the call of the Chair.
I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We have two items on the agenda. First item would be approval of minutes of minutes from regular meeting October 18, 2021.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any deletions or additions? If not, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number two, award contract 21-14 Tree Surety. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, John. Good evening, everyone. This evening, our department is requesting permission to award contract 21-14, the Tree Surety, Street Tree Planting Contract. We are requesting that this contract be awarded to Dan Larson Landscape out of Cedarburg for a maximum cost of $66,940.73. This will be a 2022 planting contract. The base bid of $50,191 include, $191 includes a planting of 245 street trees. At alternate number one for hand digging holes while working around buried utilities at an estimated cost not to exceed $800. At alternate number two for additional watering cycles if we have a dry summer season, maximum estimated cost of $14,000. Both of those items are not automatically paid out. Once the base bid contract watering cycles end, we'll start taking on some of those additional ones. If we don't need all 14 watering cycles, we don't pay for all 14 watering cycles. It's just an as needed situation. The 3% contingency for this would be $1,949. Total maximum estimated cost again for the contract is $66,940.73. Funding for this contract is from several sources. The Tree Surety account will pay for new street trees planted, street trees planted in new residential developments. We will also be using 2022 capital funds to support the Emerald Ashbourne Free Street Tree Program. We also have some carryover funds for the EAB and Free Street Tree Program. And we will also be using donations and revenues from firewood sales to support this contract. That's what we have. Thank you.
Okay, what do you want? Do we have a motion?
Second.
All right. Any questions for Mike? If not, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn.
With that, I will call to order the meeting of the Finance Committee. We have two items on the agenda. First off, we have the Finance Committee approval of the minutes for November 8th meeting, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. The second item is an item for consideration. We have a decision regarding a claim and disallowance for Douglas Kibler, Kibler, on behalf of Chris Holdridge. I'm not sure if Jay has anything to add. It's a standard insurance matter.
Motion to deny.
Motion to disapprove.
Motion to disapprove. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on that? All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. With no further business before us, I will adjourn the meeting of Finance.
And good evening once again. I'll call to order the City West Bend Common Council Meeting for December 6. Note that we do have a quorum with Alderman Dolnick absent and excused. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let me see if this is a flag of the United States of America and a true republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll note that we have 11 items on our agenda, the first being approval of the minutes, the Common Council regular meeting minutes for November 8.
Motion to approve.
I'll give that one to Madal and Kayler. Any corrections discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Move on to presentations. A oath of office for firefighter paramedic Laura Baruda. And we'll have the Chief come up.
I, Laura Baruda, have been appointed as firefighter, paramedic in the city of West Bend, Washington County. Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin. And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
Just a quick introduction for Laura. We welcome her to the city of West Bend. She comes with us from the Milwaukee area. She served, or I guess did serve for Bell Ambulance as a paramedic for the last five or six years. She's also a part-time firefighter with the Lisbon Fire Department. So we're excited for her. We're happy for her. We can't wait for her to start. And we're going to have her husband, Alex. And Alex is a firefighter with the city of Brookfield.
Missed those guys.
Congratulations again and welcome to the West Bend team. And with that, as if we have a seamless transition, we're going to move on to our next item, which is presentation of the Fire Department Organizational Study and Operational Review by McMahon. So come on up, guys. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having us. So my name is Ed Henschel. I'm one of the consultants on this study, study group with McMahon and Associates. McMahon was retained by the city of West Bend to conduct a Fire Department Operations Review and Organizational Study, and we're going to present that to you this evening. I am the only non-public safety individual on our study team. My background is city management. Did that for more than 30 years in a couple of different municipalities in a couple of different states. So I kind of brought the management perspective to this study. And we have with us this evening also Jeff Romer. Jeff, raise your hand. Jeff is the, is the principal in charge of the municipal consulting group at McMahon and is, has a broad police and fire background, including serving as fire chief with the city of Green Bay. We also have with us Dan Burns. Dan is an EMS specialist and focused his attention on EMS, emergency medical services being provided to the, to the city. And then we also have with us Robert Whitaker. Robert is the fire chief with the North Shore Fire Department, has a very, obviously very strong background in the fire service. And Robert is actually going to present the study to you this evening. Included in this study was a, a review of the fire and emergency medical services. We looked at staffing, funding, including revenue sources. We looked at the services provided by EMS, including your interfacility transfers. We looked at station locations, your internal organization and operations. So with that brief introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Robert to present the rest of the study to you. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. We're going to try to keep the presentation to 20 minutes. That is my goal. So as Ed said, I'm Robert Whitaker. I'm one of the members of the team on this project and the, will present the, the, or the report. It's my understanding that everyone has, at least on the council, has a copy of the actual document that was submitted to the city. So I will use the PowerPoint as the summary of that. But if there's any questions or anything on something that we may cover here in the presentation, that's not, or not in the presentation, but in the document, more than happy to answer those questions as we go through. So as Ed said, we were retained by the city to do a analysis of the Fire Department as an organization and as a operations and service level study. The goals of that project, based on the scope that the city released, was to provide an analysis of the Fire Department's funding and staffing, the efficiency and effectiveness of the organization, the future needs, and future funding. All things that are important as you look at the, the outcome of the study as the common council who drives the, the overall strategic direction for the city in conjunction with the administrator. The, we also wanted to provide some administrative and managerial recommendations and improvements as part of the study, and we'll cover each of those as we go forward in the presentation. So the consulting team, as Ed introduced, we did interview the elected, some of the elected officials, some of the city officials. We did interviews with Fire Department staff. We talked and toured the facilities and the apparatus and vehicles and evaluated the data that was provided and the documentation also. We did several project updates throughout this, throughout the project, the team, and we want to thank the, the staff from the Fire Department, the entire department for assisting, and everyone was very cooperative and supportive of what work we asked. And we asked some interesting and tough questions that made everyone, I think, really think about the organization and its future. So it, in a quick overview, your demographics, that will drive a lot of what we're going to talk about here. The city, not only protect the city, but you protect portions of different, two different towns. So you have about 34,000 people in the city, 15 square miles. You also have portions of the town of West Bend, Barton, that you provide service to in addition to the different EMS, or excuse me, mutual aid packs that you have with your surrounding communities where you assist them. So your total, let me move on here. Your department has, there we go, three stations located in, on the city. You have, like I said, some service area in the townships that you have under contract. Your organizational structure is a chief, deputy chief, three battalion chiefs, and those, each one act as a shift commander. The 24-hour shift employees work out of the three stations, and they each have a battalion chief that oversees their shift. Two administrative captains, nine lieutenants, nine pump operators, 15 firefighters, and all, all those, the captains and below are paramedics, so the state licensed paramedics. One of the trends that we saw as we looked at the data for the Fire Department, and I think probably one of the reasons that this was identified as a study that the, the city wanted to do, was the increase in call volume that the department has responded to over, let's, we looked at 10 years. So over the 10 years, you've had a 40% increase in your total calls for service. So that's requests from the public through 911 or your seven-digit non-emergency number for service or for interfacility transfers, which your department also performs. So in 2016, you responded to about 3,900 runs or calls for service. 2020, you're at about 4,400 and it's probably increasing this year. The 2020 data, at times, we, when we look at data, and when I look at data, I, I will look at 2020 data and say, hmm, what really happened here? Because it was, it was a unique year, and it's not all unique and the same across the country. Some communities were impacted by COVID differently than others. Some saw a decrease in calls for service significantly, others saw an increase. So 2020, well, the pattern seems to remain the same. It is slightly higher than 2019. When you talk to the citizen that really is not maybe generally involved with decisions on public safety, they look at service, right or wrong. They're, they will grade service of fire and EMS and at times law enforcement on how fast it takes for someone to get there to help them. So when you call 911, you want someone to come and help you at that, at that time, you need them. Whether or not the right number of people show up or the right equipment shows up, sometimes doesn't matter in that citizen's mind. It doesn't necessarily mean though that that person or equipment can actually mitigate the incident they're responding to. So when someone says, hey, how, what do you think your Fire Department? If you ask your general citizen, likely in communities that have pretty quick response times, they say, oh, it's pretty good. You get into some rural communities, it may take 15, 20, 25 minutes to get someone from Fire EMS to show up at a scene. In that community, they may say, hey, that's good. I'm okay with that. I realize I'm out in the middle of nowhere. So in a community that I would call suburban, is, I would describe some of your response area, you have a little more, in some areas, it may be a little more rural. But I would generally target response times in that six minutes and 30 seconds target on average, I'm sorry, at the 90th percentile. And this is the data that you have provided. We looked at all your run data for three years and said, okay, there's two different ways to measure response time. One is average, and so that's just your simple, add up a bunch of numbers, divide it by how many pieces of data you have, and you get an average. So when you look at your average, and this response time for all calls, you're at 2018, you're at six minutes and 30 seconds, 2019, 6:43, 2027, 22. Now again, 2020, I will, I will, sometimes you have to look at that data and say, hey, what happened here? In a lot of communities in 2020, they changed their call take protocols for when you call 911 to ask more questions about COVID, which meant it took longer to ask, answer those questions and then to process the call to get it out to the station to respond. So that 722 may not be something that you look at and say, boy, that's 40 more seconds. It may not be something that the same protocol was followed in those two previous years. So it's not something that really jumps out at us and says, hey, what happened here? You did have an increase in calls for service over the previous year, so that could have some impact, but it may not be the complete outcome of that. The other way we look at response time is through what we, in, in the, in the industry, is called a 90th percentile or 90th fractile. So that's looking at nine out of every 10 calls. And where does that, where does that fall? So the average is sort of looking at five out of 10 fractile, 90th percent is looking at nine out of every 10. So it's the more frequent side of the response times. And it's not uncommon, the 90th percentile in almost every case is a higher number. So it's a longer time because now you're looking at nine out of 10 instead of five out of 10. So your, your numbers are a little higher than, than what probably would be considered common in a suburban type community with full-time protection. And so that leads us to some of the recommendations we have later in the report. As part of the study, we looked at cost per capita for what you spend per capita on your protection. So this looks at just the city of West Bend. It doesn't take into account population in the townships that you are providing service to. So this was done, instead of coming up with our own data, we used some recently released data from the Wisconsin Policy Forum. They're a, an entity in the, or actually now throughout the state that looks at government data and does analysis of things like that. They release this information. It's available on their website if you're interested. But they looked at funding or spending per capita in this, and so then we narrowed it down and said, hey, let's look at similar sized communities. So if you look at city Beloit's on the top, at $227 per person or per resident, they responded to about 5,600 calls that year, just as a point of reference. And then you, you scroll down and you'll see where West Bend falls at $151 per person for about 4,300 calls in 2020. We also took a look at the anal, so you have population in those townships. So that does adjust your service in your population. And you have parts of the town of West Bend, and then you have the town of Barton. So it changes your numbers from about 30, in 2010, you had about 38,000, 2020, 41,000. The 2030, Department of Administration estimate is about 45,000 to 46,000. And then at 2040, you're just slightly higher than you were in 2030. So one of the things that I think is important for the council and is to look at is what's the future? Because this isn't, when you spend money on public safety, as you, as you know, raising the revenue to spend is not an easy thing to do. And there's caps and limits that have to be taken into consideration. So, so looking out to the future and saying, how can, we may have to get somewhere in the future and sort of plan that out is really important and taking a strategic look at that. The, there's a, we did an analysis of cost per capita based on your contracts with the town too, or the two towns. And it does provide something to think about for the council, and that's the, who's paying for what? And if you look at your cost per capita in the city, you're at about $85, but your towns are, are much lower at $58. And those are under contracts that are negotiated, so that may be something to consider as you move forward. So, so where we're at here, there's, there's several more slides, but up till now, we've talked about a 40% increase in calls for service, eight and a half percent increase in population over that time. There's been about a 20% change in the equalized value, so the basis that you can raise your levy on. And in that time, the FTEs for the Fire Department have remained generally stable through that same time period.
Hey, Robert, do you mind if I interrupt you?
Sure.
Can you go back two slides?
Sure can.
So on this slide, you, I think you were hinting at that our contracted amounts of the towns might want to get looked at. But then here on end of page five and top of page six, you have, based on the service contract analysis you did, it indicates that the contract amounts of the towns are likely appropriate. So are they appropriate or do they need to change?
So, so your to, your towns generally have a longer response time. Because, just based on geographics, your three stations are in the city. They understand that you have a longer response time, but some of those towns are, are growing as quick or quicker than the city and have interest in potentially additional services. So I guess what I'm saying is if that interest happens, that they're, you may, you may be okay now, but if their interest in their growth continues, that may be something that needs to be looked at for the future.
Got it. I agree. Thanks.
Yep. So, so when we do an analysis of an organization in the public safety side for Fire and EMS, we'll use categories that will, we'll look at them to sort of break our analysis down. Some of these recommendations that are in our report are some, are things that are implemented quicker than others. So what I'm going to present these in is not in a, in an order of importance, or it's, it's just by category. Some of them could be accomplished quicker than others, and some of them could be done with less funding and some require more funding. So the order here is not any sort of priority. I'm just going to go through how we categorize those in the report. So the, the, Fire Department submits reports based on their performance. And you as a council set a desire, you represent the public. So you represent the people that elect you. And the people that elect you drive likely what level of service they're willing to pay for. And on the other side, you have staff that, that looks at, from an expertise standpoint, they're paid, they're educated, they, they are, that's their job, to decide what type of protection may be appropriate. And somewhere in the middle is probably where you land as far as what, what, what service ends up being. So there, there's what you can afford, what you want, there's something in the middle. But whatever that determination is, there's a service level that's appropriate that you, that is decided for the Fire Department, for the community. So when you look at, how do you grade that service? Like I said before, response time is one way to grade the service, and it's, and it's a way that I can take data or anyone can take data and look at that and say, hey, are they meeting those goals? We want to have someone there in seven minutes, eight minutes, whatever that goal is. And that's something that I think is important for this council as the governing body to look at on a regular basis and makes, it helps you make decisions as to where to invest the, the funds that the city has. So increasing the number of reports that are provided to you as far as what's the performance of the Fire Department, how are things going, what are outcomes, EMS outcomes, fire outcomes, response times, things like that, that's important to see. The other thing that, with that is, one of our recommendations is to look at the budget process and involve the council more further in making decisions as to what the, what the priorities are. Fire Department has X number of requests in a budget year, and that, and to have the council look at that in addition to the city administration, make some of those decisions moving forward. The govern, or the organizational structure, we looked at as part of our study. Right now, as I said, outlined earlier, you have a chief, deputy chief, two administrative captains, three battalion chiefs. We are recommending making a change in the organizational structure, and that, that is to provide some greater diversity at the number, the second level of the organization. And when I say diversity, you have different levels of responsibility. Currently, the deputy chief is a single deputy chief that is oversees a fair amount of work. You have a chief that, deputy chief that reports to the chief, and then three battalion chiefs below them. We would recommend the organizational structure look something like what you see on the screen here, where there are, there's a diverse, or three groups at the number two that can, can handle that. It gives you some depth in your organization as far as command, staff. Right now, the two of the, the two administrative captains are represented positions that have, they work under the labor contract. This may give you some additional flexibility by moving those positions into the ranks that are on the screen as deputy chief, and then have the battalion chiefs report to the deputy chief of operations. There's also, as the organization has changed and the community has grown, the, the call volume for the people on the street has gone up, as I demonstrated earlier, and that's caused some challenges with getting your fire inspections and public education events done because those events are constantly interrupted by calls for service. So the, that, that really creates a challenge for the firefighters that are assigned to the shifts on the state, in the firehouses to get those events done, and for the people that they're providing that service to, to be able to expect, hey, someone's going to come and do my inspection at four o'clock, three, one o'clock, or I'm going to have a group do a presentation at a school at one o'clock. And they're interrupted commonly, they're taken, they're pulled away from those to go to calls, and, and then that, that gets, to a point that there's an acceptable level of that, but at some point, when it's a regular occurrence, they're getting pulled away, that the efficiency of getting that work done isn't there anymore. I talked a little bit before about expectations of response time. This is what this is, this slide's talking about. It's important in, in public safety to, what does the community expect? And then design your service using community expectations as part of that design, and then figuring out how that falls into the protection of the community. out how that falls into the protection of the community. So that's recommendation of what they call community risk assessment, involves some community input and survey as to what the community is asking for as part of their desire for service. Something you'll see in a lot of reports, it's not uncommon, is to develop a strategic plan for the, for the fire department as a whole, what are the direction, to communicate that direction down to the membership in the, in the fire station, so they understand where the organization is going. They have a reference point for what administration is working on, and then what the organization's goals are, so the middle-line supervisors can, can help support those goals and move One of the things that I think we'll talk about in a couple of minutes, that I think is a big need for your organization, is facilities. You have some challenges with your fire stations, with two of the three fire stations. You have some significant costs, future costs that are coming up, facilities that are probably not meeting the needs of your workforce and need some significant investment. So we'll cover that in just a minute, but that would, it would probably help you to look at that as a long-range plan and look at it all together and say, hey, how are we going to get from point A, where we're at today, to B, to accomplish what we want to accomplish? Because each part of those stations, you move one station, that impacts the next station. So if you, if you make those decisions in, I guess, points of, hey, we're going to look at this station, and, but we're not going to talk about the other two, I think you're probably going to find that you're probably duplicating a fair amount of work, and it needs to be looked at as a system, not as just a single decision. The slide I showed earlier with the organizational structure, we talked about having someone that's available that can do fire inspection and community education on a scheduled basis, not someone that's going to get pulled away for calls for service. That's the first bullet point there. Some of the education programs need some goals and outcomes, that what are you targeting when you're doing this? Not just, hey, someone's going to call me and say, hey, can you come to my event and talk to the group? There should be priorities that are decided as to what is our, what are we trying to accomplish by doing this? The fire department shouldn't be looked at as a time filler at, at someone's business grand opening to come and, and keep people busy. There should be some goals and targets for why we're going to those events and doing those things, because their, their time now is much more limited than it was even 10 years ago. One of the challenges that we saw as we did this, did our assessment, is we also look at workflow and documentation and reports, and that's a major part of the medical side of things, is the report. The system you're using is duplicative at this point. The staff knows that. It's some challenges with the software, but that's something that probably could help your firefighters, paramedics in the field, to give them something that most departments have gone to, and is a patient care, it's a tablet, and they're doing it right in the tablet, and they're not going back, they're not writing on a piece of paper and going back and entering the information on a computer. We, we realize there's a lot of, we got a lot of questions about interfacility transfers as we went through this process. We realize it's, it's probably a controversial topic. It's a controversial topic not just at the West Bend Fire Department, it's a controversial topic in the fire service in general, fire EMS service across the country. Should you continue to perform those? So real quick summary, the fire department does transfers between hospitals, generally between Frehder at West Bend or down to the main Frehder campus in Milwaukee. Sometimes they'll do other transfers that are, that are requested. We looked at that and said, hey, is this worth the time and effort for the fire department to do that? For a couple of reasons. One, the Frehder at West Bend is not in the city of West Bend, it's not in your response area. So is there any obligation from the city of West Bend to provide that service to that corporate citizen, so to speak? So hospitals, what, there's a business reason they transfer patients, because it would cost them more to have all the services they need up at every hospital. So they have a business decision that they say, hey, we're not going to offer this service here, we're going to offer only this service down at our main campus, so we need to move this patient. So it's a, it's a controversial topic to begin with, as far as what should you make for doing that service? Because you're saving a corporate, a citizen, a corporate side of things, probably some money from how they design their healthcare system. So we looked at that, and we looked at the workload, and this recommendation doesn't, wasn't taken lightly, but we did decide that there is a business model that we would recommend to continue to do that work for the fire department and continue to do those transfers. As Jeff, or I'm sorry, Ed introduced Dan earlier, Dan has a significant background in evaluating EMS systems and services. Also, one of the things that you have a significant revenue side on for the city is EMS fees. So in other words, you charge people for those transports that you do. The fee structure, we found, should be reevaluated and consolidated into two charges, a base fee and mileage for ALS, BLS, and then have return trips. So all supplies, procedures, and medication charges should be bundled. That's something that is, something that the company or the party that does your billing will be very familiar with. So it's got a lot to do with how services are billed for, but that's something that we see could raise your revenue, and the EMS schedule becomes less complicated, and then evaluating it, since a lot of services are going to what they call bundled rates now. That's what we're recommending you do. Consider raising your base fee and mileage rates. Right now, you're on the lower end of comparables, based on our benchmark data. And as I said earlier, have a fixed rate for the base fee, ALS and BLS, and there's some industry standards that, that the billing company you use will be familiar with. And then look at how those lower rates, your lower rates pull down the average, which is how insurance companies and different people figure out how to pay for those services. It's a complicated discussion, probably not for the 20 minutes here today, but something to look at and say, we should probably reevaluate our fee schedule, is what I'm saying. So we, I mentioned earlier, the stations, this is probably where you have a significant cost investment on the capital side. Station one, which is your main station, likely needs to be gutted and remodeled, literally down to the bones and probably, and rebuilt on the inside. Station two should be replaced. The building is not meet the needs of your organization or your fire staff at all. Station three is not, it's in good shape. You could probably use a small additional space there, but generally, that building is in good shape. And your apparatus and equipment replacement plan, so your vehicles, your ambulances, your engines, your ladder trucks, it's in really good shape. That's something that we found was very well done and is benefiting the community. So earlier, I mentioned the significant, the investment in people. You're looking at, and we were asked to look at, how could you, where does the fire department sit now, and what's that operational analysis? You have a couple of things going on. You have an increase in call volume. You have a workforce across the board, this is not just reflective of the firefighters in West Bend, that in the industry 10, 15 years ago, a firefighter would get off-duty from their full-time, they worked their shift, they go home. They, they would be more than happy to come back in when it got, when call volume got busy, things were going on, people were able to do that, they were available on their off day, they, they could come back and backfill those positions. Not just here, not just reflective of your staff here, across the country, that system does not work any longer. The people have spouses that work, they get home from their shift at 7:30, spouse goes to work, they can't drop their two kids that are four and six, or three and five, and come into the fire station for two, four, depends on how long that's going to go, hours, even if it's for time and a half. That system really has fallen to the wayside in the industry. So that creates a challenge that you have to have the depth and capacity with your on-duty people to handle your day-to-day call-for-service volume. And right now, you're, you're sort of on the light side of that. You need some additional reinforcements. We looked at two different models that would work in the system, and we, again, realized that capital funds are expensive, but operating funds are even harder to get, based on levy caps and things like that, that are, that are currently in effect in the state. So we looked at two different delivery model options. And real quick to preface this, right now, you have three stations with three people in each station, plus a battalion chief. That's your minimum staffing on a 24-hour basis. So one option we looked at is a three-station delivery model. Station one would have five people plus the battalion chief. Station two would have three people, and station three would have five people. When, I'm going to go to a slide and I'll come back. This model would take 48 FTEs. Right now, you have 33, so it's a significant increase in the number of people you'd have in the fire department, a very significant increase. How did we come to that decision? So in the report, this map's easier to look at, but we did a GIS drive-time study of the response area. The black lines, that's the city borders and the boundaries, this doesn't look at the townships. The lighter yellow is four minutes, and then as it gets darker, that gets, that's the longer response time. So this is the drive time. This doesn't take into account the time it takes for the 911 dispatcher to process the call, or for what we call turnout time. So in other words, from the time the station's alerted to the time that wheels actually start rolling on the, on the ambulance or the fire engine. So under your three-station motto, the city is pretty well-covered, with some exceptions. So if you total in that call process time and what we call turnout time or out-of-shoot time, that light yellow area probably means about 6 minutes and 30 seconds, if you really started a watch when someone dialed 911 to the time the first unit got there. The darker yellow is about, I believe that's 6 minutes drive time, so you're probably talking about 8 minutes and 30 seconds total, and then you get farther and farther out. So this is your three-station model. Station two, which is up in that far northeast corner, it's a little black dot, you'll see that in the report. Station one is, I guess, to the left and slightly south, if you're looking at the page. And then station three is directly south of station one. If you'll notice, station two is significantly closer to station one than station three is to station one. What our understanding was, is that site for station two was selected years ago when there was more train traffic that traversed the city, and that ended up in significant delays between, between the railroad tracks, basically. So probably if we were looking at saying, should, if you're going to tear, if you're going to just bulldoze station two, should you rebuild it on that same site? I don't believe you should. That, that site is probably not the best location, because if you look at, I'm going to fast-forward here real quick. If you look at, so this map looks at, again, lighter yellow is the short, the quicker time. This map looks at only two stations, so station one, which is in the middle, and station three, which is on the south side. As you'll see, you get a little more dark yellow and pink to the east side of the city, and some of that area is not as developed currently. And then you, but that's, that's your general, your impact, is you still have the majority of the city is, is yellow. So what's that, what's that telling me when I look at this as an analysis of response? Is probably station two and station one are too close to each other. You're growing also to the west, so that's something to look at in the future. And again, I talked, we talked, and the mayor asked about the townships. That's something that if townships were interested to the west of you, that may be something to relook at, relocating. And that's something when I said, you need to do this strategically. You can't just look at the station and say, oh, this is, this needs to be rebuilt, let's just put this here, and not think about how that's going to affect the other two locations. So option two that we looked at, because we realized 48 FTEs from 33 is a significant increase. We did look at, is there any other model that would be reasonable? We looked at a two-station model, which eliminates station two. One, you don't have that train issue you had when that site was selected before. But it puts a need for 36 FTEs in, in the fire department. You're currently at 33, so that increase is, is a little more palatable, if you're looking at numbers and how you're going to go about that. As the bottom bullet point says, if that, the town of West Bend, which I know there's, there's always a lot of talk about what they're interested in doing, if they, if they say, hey, we're really interested to work with you for more service, that's an area you may need to look at, though, and go back to a three-station model under this type of, when you're looking at this. So this has five people in each station. The model here, right now, you have three stations with three people at a minimum. You can handle three calls for service, for the most part, with that, with that deployment model. This would allow you to handle four, four calls for service at the time. So we are looking at, how do you improve your system with the capacity you have? Because you are struggling, as the industry is, to get people to come in on their day off to backfill those stations when additional calls happen, and you're getting multiple calls at the same time. It's not, we all wish we could schedule a call at eight, okay, and then there's one at 10, and then station three will go out at noon. It doesn't happen that way. Four, three, four calls at the same time is pretty, pretty regular and occurs a lot in the city. There were questions as we did our study about vehicle staffing, and a lot of those questions revolved around how many people on an ambulance should, is appropriate. The state statute for ambulance staffing is two people. There are purposes and reasons why, under your current deployment model, you run three. Actually, under your current deployment model, I would probably do the same thing, because you leave one person back. If an ambulance leaves with two people, one person isn't going to do a whole lot for service in responses to fire and medical emergencies. Excuse me. So under the model where we have five people in a station, we would recommend you change that to two people on the ambulance. The second vehicle, the fire engine, in that station would have three. That also would allow you to have a second ambulance in each station. You have enough vehicles to do that now, to take a second medical call if that came in with the three people that are left in the station. Excuse me. I'll move on to human resources. We looked at compensation levels for positions in similar-sized organizations. We found that most of the positions were paid at a lower rate than similar-sized organizations. We also, as I talked about earlier, found that your reliance on callback, or what often people coming in, probably needs to be reevaluated. Right now, there's a significant reliance on those people. One of the things that a fire department gets looked at, and in fire and EMS, it's what you would call, there's, there's low-frequency, high-risk events. Those are the events you want to train your people for, because they're not doing it often, and when they do do it, there's a critical time factor involved. So that's something we recommend you reevaluate, the number of hours you're getting in per training for your staff. There is a national standard or recommendation from the ISO, it's 16 hours a month. One of the challenges you have in getting there is that they're, the time available, because their training is constantly being interrupted with calls for service, they never get to complete the training, because the training is being done when they're on duty. It's not done on off-duty, and you come in and you go to a class. It's being done while they're on duty. And the call volume during the day is your highest call volume. If you look at a, if you graphed out where your calls are, it's all, a lot of your calls are going to be between like eight and seven, 8:00 AM and 7:00 or 8:00 PM. So it's a challenge to get your training done. There also is a recommendation in the report for new hires, that right now, they get a one-week training before they go on shift, that that be extended a little longer. The, one of the things that, there's a, there is a significant challenge in the 911 industry is to find sufficient number of people to work in that workforce. People don't want to work third shift anymore, they don't want to work second shift, they want to work Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 4:00, have all holidays and weekends off. And 911 dispatch is not a job that you can do that. Consequently, that is a challenge to find people to fill those positions, and the requirement-- those positions, and the requirements for those positions, the training and the education is increasing every, all the time. So there's a, an industry challenge in 911. One of the recommendations we have in here is for the city to evaluate transferring those through 911 dispatch, over to Washington County. Washington County has a county dispatch center, and would, as I understand it, provide that service on their levy, not on the city's levy. We also make that recommendation, because that may allow to, I'll be back up. I don't remember the number you spend on 911 dispatch a year. I'm not saying, and the study's not saying, you could eliminate that cost completely. Because you would need to have, normally, some of the 911 dispatchers do clerical support for the law enforcement, the police department. And that's pretty common in the industry. You would need to have positions to support their clerical needs at the police department. But there's a significant capital investment in the equipment for 911 PSAPs. There, it's ever-changing. It's being updated. The back end of what we call the 911 system is being upgraded throughout the state. So there's capital costs that are coming for that. So there may, there may be a cost benefit to look at working with the county, and other municipalities in your 911 dispatching system. The last one on this slide is, you have an administrative assistant position in the fire department. I believe she works about 28 hours a week. We did look at her responsibilities and work. The work she's doing is probably of a higher grade than administrative assistant. So we, we recommend that you probably re-categorize, or re-look at that position, as to how it's We look at your external systems and relationships. There seems to be some challenges between the fire department and the DPW, in vehicle maintenance and vehicle support. I believe there's a regular, or a challenge with some turnover on the mechanic's side at the DPW, so there's not a consistent maintenance and, and relationship with the fire department for some of that work. Also found some lack of communication between the fire department and dispatch, and what services they offer, and what they do at dispatch. And then finally, the, you have some challenge in your, in this area, because you are probably the, one of the few communities with full-time fire and EMS people. Your surrounding communities don't have them. Our recommendations earlier about staffing likely would be different if your surrounding communities had on-duty responders in their fire and EMS stations. They don't. You have no, in a, in a more urban community, where multiple municipalities are near each other, I, if I need help, I can call my neighbor, and I know they have people generally on duty. You don't have that situation. If you call for help, you're waiting for someone to come from home, from another state, from another community, farther away, probably a more rural area, so the time is ticking, and you're going to be, you're waiting a long time. So talking to your neighbors about how you do automatic aid and mutual aid, and talk about those agreements, probably is something that, that really, as communities in this area grow, is going to be important. Final one, and again, we look at some detail. This is not something that I would probably put on the council, but for the staff, is to look at your wellness, fitness program, as to what some of the goals and outcomes for that are. So with that, I probably went, I did go over my 20 minutes, as I look at the clock on the screen here, but I would be open to questions, or anything for Ed, Dan, or Jeff.
Yeah, it's, it's an important topic, so you're allowed to take a lot of time. We've been waiting a while for this. I do have a few, just clarifying questions here. So maybe if you just want to go back a slide or two. So I'm just reading from page 22 of your report, it says McMahon recommends the department engage in additional neighboring departments and automatic aid agreements that would provide immediate response at the time of dispatch, blah, blah, blah. How's this different than Mavis?
So Mavis is a mutual aid agreement, but that is, Mavis stands for Mutually Aided Box Arm System. It's a statewide mutual aid agreement, if you're not familiar with it. That is defined for systems that a community is either overwhelmed, and they can't provide the service, because they have a major incident going on, or it's to support a major incident. Automatic aid would be, you have a second call for service on your west side, it's closer to the Jackson Fire Station than it is maybe your Station two, and that's the next West Bend station available. We're just going to call Jackson for that call for service, then have Station two drive across town to get there.
Okay.
And, and there's a lot more background that goes on with some of that, that requires coordination with those communities. I know there's some challenges with the neighboring communities, as to what they will provide on a timely basis, but that would be some conversations that would be important to have.
Back on the dispatch, you did a good job covering the HR piece, but can you talk more about the technology? Because you noted in your report about the difference with home, home phone lines, for cell phone lines, or what the county can handle, what we can handle.
Sure. So, majority of calls, and I, I can't speak, because the number off the top of my head, as far as specific number, but most of your calls for service are coming from cellular, at this point in time. Landline 911 calls are pretty limited. By how the cellular system works, for 911, they're all going to the county, right now, anyway. And then the county answers the call, and says, where's the call happening? What's the, and they say, oh, it's City of West Bend. Okay, we're going to transfer you to the, to the City of West Bend. So that's, the majority of your calls are already going through a different dispatch center, and there's a delay in how that call is processed, because it's, okay, yep, I'm going to get this information, now I'm going to transfer you back over to this place. For your staff, when they respond outside of the city, they now have to deal with two dispatch centers, because they are going into the towns, where they are dispatched by the county dispatch center. So there's a lot of duplicative work that's happening, back and forth, between the responders and the dispatch centers, too. On the cost side, you're maintaining a CAD system, so computer-aided dispatch system. The trunked lines that come into the dispatch center, your wirelines for your radios, your, your backend for all those servers and all that, is, is probably also being, a similar system is being maintained at Washington County, too.
Thank you. And then my only other question was, you referenced increased reporting. I'll give Chief Kudek a lot of credit. If there's one thing that he does right, it's a lot of data and numbers, and every time I've asked him for it, he definitely supplies it to us. So we already get monthly reports that have pretty detailed information. I guess, is there anything else missing that we should be including in these reports? Or?
No, no, if the councils, is the entire council getting them?
I believe so. Yeah, we get it monthly.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
So is there any other feedback, what should be included in those reports?
I think that, and I, we did recognize that there's, he's got a ton of data, that, and that's good. You know, there's a, the emergency services is a fine balance between data-driven, and there's emotion in emergency services, too. And there's emergency, there's emotion in politics, and we're a government, fire and EMS is generally a government entity. So somewhere in the middle is a good decision. Making sausage, probably, is the best way to describe it. But if you're, if you're getting that, that's, that's extremely.
Just was curious. All right, thanks. What about the rest of you guys? I don't want to hog up all the time. Yes, sir?
What specifically, you talked about wellness and fitness. Are there shortfalls that we currently have, that we need to address? Is this just general comment, applies to everybody, insert paragraph here?
Yeah, no. I think one of the challenges I, we saw, just from a specific incident here, and issues in West Bend, is that Station two is, you have, as an organization, made a good decision to invest in wellness and fitness of your employees. You want to have people that are in shape. This is not a job that you sit behind a desk. When something happens, you want them in shape, because you don't want them to be then gone on some sort of injury, or lose an employee to an injury, or worse yet, a death. The, literally, your, your fitness space at the Station two is in between two parked vehicles, and is probably insufficient for what, if that's an organizational priority, for what it should be. When we look at the goal question, I think you asked, there, just to say someone goes to, hey, you should work out, doesn't necessarily mean they're getting anything out of that. And there are ways to look at those programs from outcomes, to say, hey, you know, let's set a goal. I want to be better at this, or I want to improve this. That was what I'm referencing there.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just had one other question. When you, you talked about the staffing changes needed for the Option one, or Option A versus Option B model. I think Option A was a 15-staff add, Option B would be about a three-staff add. Is that inclusive of the additional two deputy chief roles that you spoke of, or would that be in addition to?
So the two additional deputy chief positions would be by re-categorizing the captains that are on the Monday through Friday schedule now. So you're not necessarily, you're not adding two positions, you're re-categorizing them, retiring them.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, yeah, a couple, a couple of questions. One of them is, is kind of what she was talking about. You talked about a couple of different options, and there was a couple other positions that it felt like you were possibly adding people, or subtracting people. What I was looking for, because, you know, I haven't been involved with a firefighter analysis before, and what it felt like we were going into this for, was a number. If you had to give us a number, just a generic number, how many more firefighters do we need?
Well...
I know it's a depends thing, but just, just a generic number.
So if you, I'm going to get to this slide here. Yeah, this is the one I want to be at. So you're probably 48 from 33.
So really, we need 15 more firefighters.
Right. And that's to operate from three stations.
Because that, that two-station model doesn't really, not for a city that's growing, right? It feels like going backwards.
It'd be potentially going backwards, yes. I don't disagree with you. Is Station two located in the right place? Probably not.
Sure.
So if you're just going to put another station on that site, I don't know that that's the best decision.
Yeah, it sounded like, to me, that Option two would be more like a stepping stone to getting back to three stations, because we inevitably need them. But because Station two isn't probably the right, in the best spot, anyway. You know, is that fair?
Yeah, I think, and with Station two, you're probably not going to reuse any parts of the building that are there today.
Okay.
Whereas at Station one, you probably have some investment that's there, that you could reuse. So Station two is, just from a location, and from a quality of the structure, is probably the, if you're going to eliminate one, that's where I'm going to eliminate my station. And it's way on the northeast side. So it doesn't support your other two stations, because there's also something to be said about, you know, not every, not every call for service is a one-station response. If you, if someone called and says, hey, my house is on fire, you're probably going to get, you're getting all three stations. And there's something to be said, when you talk about deployment of resources, in, in the industry, that not only looks at, how quick can you get the first one there, but how quick can you get the backup one there, too? Because there is a state statute that talks about how many people are required to start an interior firefighting operation. And you, three people is not sufficient. And yet, it's what you have in, in a single station. So you literally have to wait for your second station to get there, before they can start going inside to fight a fire. So, you know, you could say you get there in six minutes and 30 seconds, though that doesn't necessarily mean they're, they're going in to put the fire out. They're there. But they're not there to, they can't go in the building.
And then my other question had to do with job satisfaction, and burnout is something we've been hearing a lot about with our, with our fire force. You got to talk to most of these guys. Did you get a sense for job satisfaction at this point, or where they're feeling like the department's at?
Yeah, I think the, one of the things that, that, that came up in the study, is I think you have, one, I'll preface this, you have a group of people that want to do a good job. You don't have, which is good. You have people that are invested in the city, want to provide a service, are good at what they do, are concerned about the quality of service they provide. You do have some challenges in that, a lot of the employees feel that they work really busy. When they're in the station for 24 hours, it's a busy period of time. And if, under the current system now, when they walk out the door, and they take a pager home with them, that pager's going off two, or three, or four times a day. And they're saying, hey, come back to work, come back to work, come back to work. And, and in an organization that wants to succeed, if you, if you're a member of an organization, you want that organization to succeed. You don't want to see it fail. So there's some, like, oh, I should probably go in and, and help out. Well, eventually, that, that becomes, I'm there all the time. Or I'm there four hours on my day off, and I come back the next day, work my 24, and I go home. So there's some concern that we, I saw, well, more than some concern, significant concern, about how, how frequently that is happening. If you call people in, on their day off, every once in a while, for that really big incident, people will probably come in, because it's, something's happening. But they're getting called in for sort of run-of-the-mill, day-to-day stuff. And when they come in, what hap, a lot of those transfers that are happening from the hospital down to Milwaukee, that's three hours. So not, you, you've just, you know, if you come in at 1:00, you're not going home until 4:00. And that's not a planned event, and you can't do that every day you're off. And that came up in a lot of employee interviews.
Yeah, it sounds like burnout. And I would hope that the city, if we want to be an employer, we want to be a good one. Treat these guys right.
Any other questions? Yep.
There was one slide that you said showed that we are spending less per capita than, like, communities. If we would increase that to the average, or just above the average, how much of, how much would we achieve? Is that, is that five firefighters? Is that a new firehouse? Is it 15 firefighters?
So 15 firefighters, and I would probably defer to Jay on this, but I'm going to think about $2 million a year, probably.
1.5, something like that.
Yeah, 1.5 to 2. I usually, just for a round number, use 100,000, but that number keeps going up. And that's the market we're in, and the workforce we're in. So I'd have to do some math, that I can't do in my head. But it'll, it'll definitely get you in the, I would think, in the middle of the pack. Yeah.
So maybe just to jump off of that, did you have any other recommendations for funding sources? I mean, you talked about analyzing our fees, probably increasing those, outsourcing dispatch, possibly decommissioning a station. Are there any other, other recommendations?
So, so your major revenue source is your levy. Probably to do something in the range of a million and a half to $2 million is probably a referendum-type discussion, which is never an easy discussion to have. That would be one way to do it. There is some legislation that this would, it definitely doesn't cover your million and a half to $2 million problem. It may help. That, I believe, hopefully will come up in the spring session in the state legislature. It revolves around EMS billing. Right now, just in summary, if I, I don't remember off the top of your head, and Dan, do you remember what their Medicare/Medicaid population is? Off the top of your head?
Okay. So probably, you probably have a fairly reasonable amount of your transfers are Medicare or Medicaid population users. So for Medicare and Medicaid, if I, if the bill you send them is $900, you're going to get paid about $283. And you can't go and collect, you generally don't go and collect that. You probably could, but from a political standpoint, to collect from elderly residents isn't a popular thing for a governing body to do. So, the pay, if I send that $800 or $900 bill to a private insurance company, they're paying me $800, $900. So there's a disparity. The population that you're generally dealing with is Medicare or Medicaid. So you're not getting paid for what you're billing. There's, write-off is what they call that. There's some legislation, January 1st, the Medicaid amount goes up slightly. The state, in their last legislative session, increased that slightly. But it does not get it anywhere close to what you're billing out. And there is some legislation that I believe, hopefully will get introduced in the spring session, called General Emergency Medical Transport Legislation. It's a Medicare, or I'm sorry, yes, a Medicare supplement. It's, it's from the feds. It's not a state, it's not from the state. It's federal, goes to the state. They then pay the user. Depending how close you follow state politics, there is some hesitancy to accept any other additional federal funding from Medicare, from the feds in Wisconsin at this point. But the legislation would basically add to the, the feds would increase what they pay for Medicare patients significantly, which would help probably on your...
for Medicare patients significantly, which would help probably on your revenue side. So probably from a legislative standpoint, that may be something important that the city council may want to watch in the spring session.
Good to know. Yes, sir.
Yeah, as long as we're on the per capita cost comparison, do you have a similar slide or data available that tells us how many firefighters that each of those entities have? In other words, do we have some way to compare our organization to the other nine or so similar-sized organizations? In other words, are we comparing apples to apples? Or do we have fruit salad?
Yeah, we definitely can provide that data. We have it. It's, I don't believe that the total number of employees is in the report for the comparable, but we can provide that. Just, in general, if you look at City of Beloit, they have three fire stations, City of Brookfield has three fire stations, Fond du Lac has three fire stations, Franklin has fire station three, Greenfield is two, I believe Manitowoc is three, Oak Creek is three, and then West Bend is three. So.
Right, but, but the staffing, the number of pieces of equipment that they have, I mean, how actually comparable are these organizations?
Yeah, we could provide that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Actually, one last question. The 151 fire per capita and the population, is that genuinely the city of West Bend? Or are you including Barton and Town of West Bend in that number as well because you're providing fire service to them?
I believe it's just the city.
City, okay.
Anything else?
Yep. I guess the other thing is, how many of these other cities are providing services to outlying towns like we are? Is that also a unique situation?
In this category, and just looking at it, I think, other than, and I'm not familiar with Manitowoc, the rest of them, I don't believe they do. I think they provide specifically what that population is on the screen. So in other words, it's city, city-centric, I guess I'll call it. I don't know, I have to check with Manitowoc to see if they do any township contracts. It's not unusual in the state to have a community like West Bend do township contracts or contract with neighboring towns. That's not unusual at all. That's pretty common.
Right. Yep, just keep firing down. Yeah, go ahead.
That's what I'm here for.
With the understanding that, that two EMS fellows per EMS vehicle, I'm sorry, I'm starting to have a hard time spitting that out. Is that just, is that a matter of, you know, the two versus three thing? Is that a matter of good service versus great service? Is it, is it, is it a service to the constituent?
Yeah, so there's, I would agree with your statement that it's tough to argue that two is better than three, or five is better than, you just can't argue, you know? If you put more players on the team, on the basketball floor, in the field, you're going to.
Well, it seems kind of obvious. I know, but I think we're used to doing three, it'd be kind of a weird thing.
So the models that are in the report, though, that doesn't necessarily mean only two people would only go on a call for service. It's saying there are certain calls where you might have five people show up at that call for service because the 911 dispatcher triages that call out and says, boy, this is a, this meets these categories. You know, this is, this is a, this is a higher severity call type. Or on the really low severity call types, you may only send two people. So.
So just changing the policy is what you're talking about.
It's changing a policy. It's not necessarily saying that you only need two people to ever deal with an EMS call. Great.
Anything else? Well, first off, I'll start off by thanking you guys. Thank you so much. It's been a fun, long journey, so we appreciate you hanging out with us and learning more about the city of West Bend. And, you know, I'll just acknowledge for the council and for the city that this is a lot of information to digest, a lot of long-range planning, and obviously, there's no quick and easy solution that we could just do overnight. I do want to acknowledge that the council received a GIS study from Steve Inoff and the union, so feel free to peruse that as well. That adds some additional information for this full background as we take a look at this. The way that I envision us tackling this is we'll probably create a subcommittee similar to what we did with the Health Plan and Insurance Committee at the start of the new year, and to examine this information a little bit more, explore some options, and then bring it back to council. With that, did you have any other final closing comments? Yes?
I can fill in one of the questions that was asked. Manitowoc does provide EMS service and possibly backup fire for the volunteer fire in surrounding communities.
Good to know. Good job, Manitowoc.
That's what I would have done, too.
All right, well, thank you guys for being here. Thank you to all of you guys for being here and sitting through all this, and there's a lot of great information. Thanks so much. And with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of items 3 through 6.
Start, Kayla.
Thank you, Kayla, and Alan. Any comments or corrections on this? Hearing none, all is in favor, so anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Under agenda items for consideration, we will be skipping number 7 and moving just straight to item 8, which is appointment of election workers. I've heard this is the first batch of names, and we'll have a few more come at our next meeting as well, but this is the wonderful appointment that we get to do every two years. We'll be looking for a motion for those. Thank you, Kayla and Butchlik. Any comments or questions? Yes, sir?
I noticed a number of elected officials that are listed as election workers. How is that handled in years that they're standing for election? Are they just not eligible during those years, during those elections?
Yeah, correct. If they're on the ballot, they can serve. Do you allow them, though, to move districts? If, like, let's say there was an alderman, right, and then you needed them to fill in in another district?
Yeah, they could, as long, as long as they're in the county, they can go to any district.
I got you. Did that help? Okay.
Answered my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Then, all is in favor of those appointments, anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then we'll move on to reports. Number 9, a report by Alderman Berquist regarding the library board meeting. Take it away.
Thank you, sir. Our last meeting of the library board was held on November 16 at the library. After conducting the business at a board, the financial report included recognition of donations from the early risers Kiwanis for library programming. Our public comments portion of the meeting actually had a public comment. Representatives from Friends Inc. and NAMI Washington County spoke on developing a partnership with the library for communicating their message of diversity and acceptance for all by placing a mural at the library. The library directors report included staff reports for the leaders of the youth services section, circulation services, and outreach sections. A shout-out goes to Terrica, Emily, and Nancy for providing that information to the board. Highlights include the very popular story walk, which has moved inside for the winter season. Also encouraging is the fact that local schools are now calling again for tours. This hasn't happened since 2020. Circulations came in at almost 34,000 checkouts, and there were 169 new library cards issued. 4,700 items were borrowed from other libraries, and 5,500 items were lent out. Outreach Services is looking at moving from a pop-up style of providing services to a more targeted need-based system, delivering, excuse me, items to 30-plus individuals or programs such as a bin exchange with many of the threshold locations. They are also reviewing services provided to assisted living facilities and discuss future partnership options. Steve Theory provided us a 2022 library calendar. The board president had nothing to report this meeting, and agenda items included the 2022 close dates. We discussed those, approved them, along with a new library programming policy. We then moved into closed session to discuss employee evaluations. The next meeting of the library board is scheduled for the 18th of January. Happy holidays.
Great, thanks so much. Yes, do you have a question?
I just have a comment. I'd like to thank Alderman Berquist for his extreme brevity this week.
Thank you. That sounded like a compliment.
Take it when you can get it. Come on, Brett. All right. And then we have a report by Alderman Mottl regarding the Community TV committee.
Sure, yeah, this will be a little more brief. Community, I'm just kidding. The community TV meeting was on May 12. May 12? Good lord.
Yeah, wow, that was wild.
Where the hell did I get that from? Actually, it was. That was, that was the previous one, the minutes. Anyways, November 10. Sorry about that. And we discussed, well, there's a financial report, which is, as usual, we actually were in the black, which is not usual. We also talked about the 2022 budget, which is, you know, just a bunch of numbers, really. But on that budget is, is the achievements of 2021. I thought there was a couple of interesting things on there, that we surpassed 20,000 followers on Facebook in 2021, acquired some new sources of revenue, developed the city's first communication plan aligned with the new strategic pillars, reported quarterly and annual digital metrics, mostly to do with social media, and completed the historic district nomination search, research, and submission for downtown West Bend, so on and so forth. And then some department updates, which had mostly to do with capital interests and some social media data, and came up with our schedule for next year.
Sounds great. And questions for Alderman Mottl? Then we'll open up if there's any announcements. I did want to start off by thanking everybody who helped make the Christmas parade a success. It was truly, there's a lot of stuff happening in the background, all hands-on-deck effort to make sure that everybody, all the residents and guests in our community felt safe. So huge shout-out to all of them. What else you got?
Second annual historic Burton Fishery at Eddie's Lake House, January 15, 5:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Don't be late. Raffle tickets are $5. You can pick them up at the shop.
Sounds great. Any other announcements?
And free haircut.
And free haircut.
You heard that, folks. It's a public record now. All right, well, then, having no further business for the city council, I adjourn by the call to the chair. Have a good night.